You are watching XS Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the October eighteen twenty twenty three meeting of the Laporte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
I'd like to call the Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty three meeting six P M. If we don't stand for the pledge allegiance.
And if we could have a brief moment of silence afterwards for the terror attacks over in Israel.
Roll call.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Present.
All three here, you have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of the October four twenty twenty three minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consideration of claims, starting with payroll.
Commissioners, we have payroll for the period nine twenty nine, ending nine twenty nine twenty three in the amount of one million four hundred and forty three thousand eight hundred and twenty four dollars fourteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a question on this because this is something that I had a discussion with someone in the audience last Commissioner's meeting two weeks ago. So this is the payroll ending on nine twenty nine, correct?
Yes.
It ends on the twenty ninth, and this is now the eighteenth of October. So we're paying three weeks later because this was a legitimate question that I had.
You approved the payroll, I believe essentially in arrears, right? It's a, so. Payroll is one of the terms that is one of the items that are allowed to be paid expedited, so.
Correct.
The quick answer would be that if payroll ends on nine twenty nine, it takes it takes a couple of days to verify the payroll, get everybody's things in that aren't. One of the things that could speed this up a little bit to getting on our docket perhaps would be the electronic timekeeping that we've we've talked about in the past. But if the payroll ends on nine twenty nine, you can't send it out literally the next day, the next day is Saturday, you have to wait till wait till the next day after that. And our meeting, first meeting this month was what, the third, I believe, fourth, third or fourth? So that would have been one, one to two, two business day, no, yeah, two business days after payroll ended to get all the dockets and sheets in, compiled, verified, double-checked, and then put on our agenda. It's just two days is pretty short period to get that done.
Okay, but we are getting paid on October twentieth, correct? We're getting paid from October ninth through October twentieth this Friday, correct?
I don't have the payroll schedule in front of me, I guess we add two weeks to the one. I would suggest we take this offline and we can have a discussion and get all the answers.
The reason I ask is because Mr. George, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, but it was it was a question that was a legitimate question asked. And when he asked it for us to hold payroll for three weeks, I think that there needs to be a correction because we are getting paid from October ninth through October twentieth, and we are approving it on October eighteenth. And if we're not doing it that way, and that that date is correct, and we're getting paid three weeks in the rear, then I would agree with George that something is is not right, that it would take us three weeks to approve. Because I can tell you our payroll is getting paid from October ninth through October twentieth, and and we are approving it on the eighteenth.
Well, the only thing I could say is what Commissioner Haney said is correct, which is that we don't want to slow down payments to employees for the time that they're they're working. Claims to vendors, they submit claims, they're processed by the department head, they're approved by the department head, they come to the R's office, and that's 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 paid later after the service is provided. Employees are allowed to be paid on an expedited basis where you approve the you approve the you approve it after the fact. And so the reason that nine twenty nine is being approved a few, a couple of weeks later is for that reason. Sure, and it it just it just popped into my head here that payroll ends on Friday, nine twenty nine. Monday, our commission agenda that we would put up for goes out and is published at ten A M. That would give the auditor's office two business hours to compile the payroll for roughly eight hundred county employees, get all the sheets in, get them all checked, and get them all done to get on the docket for that Wednesday. I don't think anybody would think you can put together payroll for eight hundred people in two hours, but you know, it's pretty, pretty simple. I mean, do you think Commissioner Graham Rosa, you think we put payroll together in two hours?
I'm not smart enough to do it real simple.
It's two hours, I mean, anybody, do you think it's feasible for anyone, not you, but any?
This, um.
Be able to do that in two hours.
Ms. Grace, do you have anything to add to that?
It's stuck here, why is this stuck? I looked on my emails to see the most recent payroll sheet that I have, and the check date that comes out on ten twenty is for nine thirty through ten thirteen.
So nine thirty through ten thirteen.
So then it's paid a week after that cutoff.
Okay, so that that explains it a lot better, so we're paying on the twentieth, the third, which if they get overtime on on Saturday or Sunday, and they're going until the thirteenth.
Yes.
So that makes more sense, so instead of us approving for the twenty ninth, why are we not approving to the thirteenth? Why do we have to be?
Yeah.
But I think that explains.
Because they don't.
Yeah, please.
Because they don't have to turn in the payroll until the end of this week. And so we don't know what it is to give it to you to be approved, that's why, that's the answer.
All I was really trying to ask is if payroll ending nine twenty nine, that was paid on?
The third.
Come on.
That would have been the Friday, the Friday immediately after that, so whatever that next Friday was, the fifth.
Right, we paid every two weeks?
So it ended on the twenty ninth, but we paid it on the sixth.
We paid seven days after the pay.
And then we paid the the second through the thirteenth on the twentieth.
The twenty ninth is paid when? Payroll ending the twenty ninth is paid when?
That followed Friday.
On the sixth.
Yes.
So you're you're okaying something today that's already been paid.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
Here we go.
You are giving the auditor permission to pay something on his discretion because it's payroll.
Yes.
That's all I was trying to, he has his discretion to do it, that's all, that's all I was trying to ask is.
Thank you, but now you know at least we're not holding payroll for three weeks.
No, I, he has the discretion to do payroll as he wants, and if there's a discrepancy afterwards, then you work it out, that's all I was trying to, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And same goes with the claims, right? The operating claims that you're okaying tonight has already been paid, correct?
No.
No, that's coming in the future.
Some can be paid in advance, some they're approving tonight after the fact, they're called expedited claims, utility bills, the payroll, certain items that are regularized, if there's a stipend that's the same amount every month, like one of the attorneys gets fourteen dollars a month, that can be paid in advance because it's got to be paid no matter what, there's a list of items that can be expedited, they approve after the fact. Everything else is not supposed to be paid until they approve the entire claims docket.
Understood, Nipso, the telephone.
Right, things you don't want shut off.
Well, it's okay, yeah, all right, that's your discretion, okay.
Well, no, it's in an ordinance that specifically lays out what I can pay in advance on X, or what department heads can submit to be expedited to the R's office.
Oh, he has some control of something, okay, that's all it's trying to play you, okay.
So do we have a motion and a second on the table? We do have a motion and a second on the table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please, Ms. Roger, apologies, is this for the operating expense claims?
It is.
Of six million four hundred.
No, not for the.
Or payroll. Oh, payroll, okay. Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
And Commissioner Rosinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Moving on to operating expense claims.
Motion to approve the claims as presented.
Would you like to?
I apologize, I was just, the operating expense claims are in the amount of six million four hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred sixty eight dollars twenty nine cents. I would move to approve the claims as presented.
Okay, so, um, on those, so we understand this correctly, we did an M O U at the last meeting, whereas we went through, and I went through the minutes, and I kind of highlighted everything. And we also talked about the how we pay items out and according to the schedule, the paid claim schedule that you came up with. And you stated that you would follow this with the thirty day, when when bills came in, you would pay them within the thirty days. So we had two bills come in, both of them on the bottom were submitted to your office on nine twenty five.
We have that file stamped nine twenty nine in our office, that's.
That was when it, that was because you didn't get into the office until the twenty nine.
It has nothing to do with that, it has absolutely nothing to do with it, my claim clerks file stamp those, I don't file stamp them, they file stamp them, and then bring, put them on my desk, all attorney bills, so that's not correct.
So then why was one paid and one wasn't?
I don't know, I'm not sure what you're looking at, Commissioner.
The M O U that you agreed to for the vendor that you said you would have paid within thirty days.
Okay.
And you would follow this schedule, so.
I didn't say I would follow that schedule, I said I would pay that vendor's bills within thirty days, what day is today, Commissioner?
Today is the twentieth, and all claims.
Eighteenth is.
The eighteenth, and all claims have to be paid within thirty days according to your M O U, correct? Would you agree with that?
Yes, and you said the twenty fourth, and I said the twenty.
Our next, our next Commissioner's meeting will fall past that thirty day period. According to your schedule, it will not get paid until November third.
Says that the auditor will process such claims within thirty days of submission. I intend to follow the terms of the M O U, and I have nothing more to say. I intend to follow my my part of the bargain, my part of the M O U, and the M O U says specifically, going forward, he will process such claims, and I will process them within thirty days of submission.
But why?
Your part is separate from mine.
One for two hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents, but you didn't pay one for thirteen thousand nine hundred and five.
I believe, I'm not certain, but I think one of them was submitted accidentally by the commissioners as an expedite, and we just processed it as such.
Were, did you submit any expedited?
There were one or two that were submitted.
Can you look at these and tell me if they were submitted by?
I don't see that there's anything to discuss here, we intend to follow the terms of the M O U, and you can you can talk about this until you're blue in the face, but there's nothing to talk about.
So if you'd like to come up here and see neither one of them was expedited.
Okay, we got a couple that were expedited.
Is usually none, litigation, which is stuffed with the court, is usually not, not reviewed. And for some reason, this thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars was not paid.
So what is usually done and not usually done is not your statutory authority, it's my statutory authority, so what is usually done?
Me that even though you wrote an M O U that you claimed in good faith that you were going to start paying our bills in a thirty day period, you have now violated.
No, I have not.
And you want us, and you claimed that you came up with this in good faith, and yet here you are violating it.
I'm not violating.
You will not get this bill paid before our next Commissioner's meeting to get approved.
They misunderstand the nature of the M O U, the M O U says that that the auditor will process such claims within thirty days of submission. I intend to follow the the terms of the M O U, as I understand it, the claims will be processed within thirty thirty days.
Mr. Paycheck.
Thank you, ma'am, President, might I ask Auditor Stamos a question?
Sure.
Thank you, Auditor, just so we're clear, the M O U calls for the claims to be processed within thirty days of submission. So then we have to define this term submission. Ms. Gonzalez advises that she submitted the claim on September twenty fifth. I understand you said your file stamp might say September twenty ninth, so for future reference, should we have Ms. Gonzalez physically get, make sure she gets a file stamp whenever she submits it? We'll file stamp him, we'll file stamp him when she comes in with them so that the date will be the same, I, you know.
But I actually have it in the minutes where I said that it would be filed stamped, and he agreed to have it filed stamped. And yet here she submitted both bills at the same time, but the auditor's office chose to hold back thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars and only pay two hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents, and this blue sheet indicates that it was paid and processed. So how did two bills get down there at the same time, and they selectively chose?
I'll give you an answer, I'll give you an answer for that, Commissioner. The two hundred and twenty seven dollar and fifty cent bill is a very short bill, and we're able to go through it quickly, I've got a stack of attorney bills on my desk.
Here that you will waiver your right to go through the bills, and the billing can be requested by a commissioner, a commissioner. All three commissioners signed off on this.
I'm done talking about this, I intend to honor the terms of the M O U as I understand it, you can keep talking all you want, I'm done talking about it.
How are you going to get it paid before?
I don't need to get it paid.
October twenty.
I need to release it from my office so you can see an allow system that is released to be paid, so it'll be on your next claims docket, that's what I need to do.
Which will be November, which will be November third, thirty days after you agreed. So again, in the minutes, if you go through our minutes, I asked, is there a loophole? I asked the question, is there a loophole? And I am assured that there are no loopholes.
I, 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 just for 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 edification, I mean, I think we're trying to put this together here. Whether we go with the twenty fifth or the twenty ninth as a date, it was received in the auditor's office. That's still seven or eleven days left, the auditor has to process them to ensure that they will be on the next docket. So, I mean, he he gets thirty days to process them, that's where he's still got, even at the shortest window, he's still got seven days to process them.
Well, maybe if he came to work every day, then he could look through the bills and then he could start processing them. I mean, the auditor's position is a full-time position, isn't that?
You've been pretty busy, you've been pretty busy with your restaurant, Commissioner Graham Rosa, Michigan City.
Sir.
People haven't been seeing very much of you either.
Sir, I have been here at work.
Suggest we move on and first stop the personal attacks.
I am here at work, and unfortunately, you don't see me here because you're not here.
Okay, I suggest we move on at this point.
I predicted at the last meeting that we would have to go through this, that the auditor would not live up to the terms he had agreed to, and I think we found that out, it's something else, I know you haven't been here very long, Tim, but you have a full-time job, the commissioners are a part-time job. You failed to live up to the M O, I think that.
He's not failed to live up to the M O, he's still got seven days of the shortest window.
To go ahead and file charges in court to, for your removal.
Well, there's no statutory basis to remove the auditor, and you know that, you're doing this at the behest of Shaw Friedman, Commissioner, you're being a stooge of Friedman.
Friedman hasn't worked here all year, dude.
As you, Freeman's making more money from the county than he's ever made, I've written out checks, you got a thirteen thousand dollar check, usually.
Order, please, I mean, you're bringing up.
Your hatred for Friedman had nothing to do with you not doing your job that you're paid to do.
Okay, can we?
I will say this.
How are we going to handle this? I mean, so apparently it's not on our docket because the auditor chose not to put it on it. After he did this big, long show, and he went in the paper and talked about how, you know, he was going, you know, he came up with this idea because he was sick of it, but yet now, you know, it's very clear he's not sick of it because he received two bills, he chooses to pay one and chooses not to pay the other. So how do you want to handle this move, how do you want to handle this?
What's the amount of the one he did not pay?
The one he paid.
No, that didn't pay.
Two hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty cents, and that was for non-litigation. And the one that was not paid was for litigation, and that is for thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Like motion that we add that to our our claims docket for this evening, thirteen thousand nine hundred and five dollars to be paid A S A P, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
No.
I'll step down and I'll second that motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Commissioner Rosinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Nay.
The ayes have it.
None.
We will take your motion, you're passing that as authorization to expedite the payment.
We are not expediting it, the same way you paid one bill.
You want me to do?
You will pay the other bill, this was your responsibility, this is what you agreed to.
I'm just saying that we're taking it.
So, so I mean, giving me to expedite it, but you don't want me to expedite it, it's crazy.
Literally, you're saying he had until the twenty fifth, if this is an expedite, then if it gets paid by the twenty fifth, then what's the problem?
Because you want us to expedite bills that you should have paid.
I am saying that I am taking your vote as authority to allow me to pay the bill because I'm not statutorily otherwise authorized to pay it until it's on your next claims docket.
I mean, so, and that still never went through our claims.
This is just absolutely ridiculous, I mean, we've got a commissioner on Zoom in a Hawaiian shirt saying, dude, we've got two, and the two of you come by and can't figure out that the twenty fifth comes after the eighteenth, which is today, this is a literal clown show.
No, the clowns are you, you and an auditor who do not pay bills, you go along with this of not paying bills, there is the clown show. Legal, how, how do we proceed? If we do not add it to the claims today in order for him to pay it.
It was.
Before the twenty fourth, then, and it should not be expedited, he now has it on the claim to pay it, and it should not go through as an expedited so that they cannot.
This might be a matter of semantics, my understanding, Madam President, is that this specific bill we're talking about was approved by the commissioners, and it was submitted to the Auditor Stamos's office. Yes, the issue is when was it submitted, the twenty fifth or the twenty ninth? As far as, I think a motion was already made and seconded, and it carried to add that bill to today's, to the claim today, to authorize Auditor Stamos to pay this sooner rather than later, to comply with within the thirty days. So it's whether we call it expedited or what we just did, adding it to the claim, I I think it might be a distinction without a difference.
All I'm saying is that we will take the motion that you just passed as authorization for me to issue the check as soon as I'm finished auditing it, because without that, then I'd have to wait till your next claims docket and have that check legally on your next claims docket before I can issue it, so I'm just trying to cooperate with you by saying I will take your adding that, and I appreciate your adding that since you want that paid super fast, that I will be able to issue it as an expedite.
And just to clear, Auditor.
After I'm done auditing.
Otherwise, it would be on the claims docket for November first, is that Wednesday? Okay, so I wouldn't say, I wouldn't use the word expedited or super fast to be candid. The bill was submitted to our, to the Commissioner's office September sixteenth, I believe. The court, the Commissioner Administrator Diane walked it over on September twenty fifth, so it's within the thirty days.
And then I just have one other question, in this memorandum, was it not the understanding that they would no longer audit work productivity? And that this would be left for the commissioners, and once the three commissioners signed off on it, and one commissioner?
Yeah, I'm reading this right now, Commissioner, I don't want to take up much of everyone's valuable time. It says, auditor agrees only for purposes of blah, blah, blah. Auditor will not exclude payment on the basis of law firm's refusal to provide his office with work product or unprivileged or privileged emails. And so there's nothing in here about auditing the bill, it's to process it within thirty days. Number three, auditor retains the right to ask for additional explanation or clarification of any line item as auditor has asked and the law firm has provided to date, so I'm not aware of any requests made on that as far as that type of an audit. But anyway, I I recommend, ma'am President, the motion carried, Mr. Auditor Stamos will have this paid within thirty days, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I would just clarify if I may, that this signing of this M O A memorandum of understanding was not an agreement by the auditor to pay anyone's bills, certainly this vendor or anyone with no questions asked, and that's what Attorney Paycheck just read, number three, it is to not ask.
You're speaking as an auditor, and again, you're here in the capacity of a secretary.
Explaining something, I'm explaining something to you, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay, moving on, public comment, we are now open for public comment.
Hello, Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street, I'm here in three capacities. Sitting on the advisory board of the Community Corrections, I think it's three of us in here that sits on that board. I just want to say this, beginning of the year, we, serious issues about the building was brought up, about the maintenance. I don't want to go into too many details, I want to, I don't want to disclose some of it in public, but I don't know why it's taken so long for that building to get repaired so it can be in condition, so we can house people. Right now, I believe that one of the sale blocks is even shut down. This is something that should not be happening in this county, we own these buildings, we need to take care of these buildings. For whatever reason, they do not want to fund, provide proper funding, or sufficient funding to take care of the issues at Community Corrections. I think that's a bunch of B S, and it needs to stop. Now I'm here, I'm running for the first ward of Michigan City, and had the opportunity to examine some of our bridges in Michigan City, especially the ones that's in the first ward. I brought this up to your, you guys' attention last meeting, Mr. Rosinski, thank you for calling me back today, we had a good conversation. I don't understand why the upkeep of these bridges are not being done, for the life of me, it's terrible. We have one of the bridges, it's the Al Whitlow Bridge, that's located on Spranglin Street. All the overgrowth and the nonsense that's going on, you can barely see the man's name, and his family was just here a week ago taking pictures at that bridge, it's unacceptable. I don't know what we need to do to get this expedited and get it done, Richard Rosinski promised me that something's going to happen, I believe that it will. Mr. Haney, Ms. Graham Rosa, we all can work together to get this done, this is not a hard process. We know that it needs to be done, let's get to it, let's get it done sooner than later.
So actually, the person that, and the place that you should be is at the vectors. So we do have bridge crews, and they do the repairs of the bridge, that's our responsibility as the county. But when a bridge is within a city, then it would be the city that would maintain the grass, cleaning it, taking care of all that. I did get a chance to talk to Sean Smith, and he said that the best thing to do would be going to the vectors in Michigan City and lodging a complaint with them and with the building department in Michigan City.
I do not believe vector control, they helped clean up the first bridge, the Frank Lloyd Bridge. Vector Control don't have authority to go on top of a bridge, underneath a bridge, cut down brush that's attached or going through the bridge. That is highway, that is, that is the county's responsibility. And then the infrastructure of the Frank Lloyd Bridge, we have struts or whatever we call it, that are completely rusted. It seemed like you can just poke a screwdriver through it, I brought it to the, you guys' attention. Now, this is, now we're talking about the safety of our citizens, we have a right to know if that bridge is okay. We see that the seams are are moving around, we don't know if it's safe, the pictures I showed you, severe rust. I'm not an engineer, I didn't graduate from Purdue, I don't know anything about this, but it seems unsafe. So I'm going to stand here every day until we work together to get something done, we can keep trying to, I'm not letting the can get kicked down the road. Highway needs to come out with us, and let's get something done, it's just a simple. It's just a simple process. And maybe the city for once will send somebody over here other than me or bring some representative. Maybe we can work together where the county cleans it up during the summer or the beginning of the year. And then the county can kick, the city can kick in and clean it up during the middle of the summer. But just to to keep passing it around is not right. Um, I don't want to repeat what other people told me, but other county officials agree that this, the responsibility of that bridge is the county. And I'm not, I'm not going to take it no further than that. I would greatly appreciate it, Madam President, if we can just work together and not point fingers. Because that's how we get things done in in government. Um, it don't, shouldn't make a difference what party affiliation you are with or where you live at. After all, your districts run right through our city. It runs right through Michigan City, so I'm coming here to talk to you. I know it's kind of strange to see people come from Michigan City and and say, hey, can you help us? I I I know our city council hasn't done a great job with communicating, maybe not, maybe even our mayor. But I'm here to communicate. And if I'm elected to office, you're going to see me a lot, lot more than what you're seeing me now anyway. And then my next issue that I want to bring up, and I just want to get this confirmed. I'm not here to ruffle any feathers. I I, the the Republican Party had, they received a bad rap over the beginning of this year with the hiring or looking for another person to be the H R director for Monique Thomas. A lot of us in Michigan City don't, a lot of us, um, for some reason, we just continue to vote Democrat, not paying attention to what's going on. So I just want to get this on the record. When the Democratic Party was in control, Sheila and and, uh, Doctor Cora, ironically, he's running for office. Um, it was in their power to hire Monique, is that correct?
Yes.
Mister Haney?
The, what, I'm I'm sorry, when you hired?
It was in their power. They could have hired Monique Thomas from the beginning.
It's a ten member board.
Yes. They could have recommended and they didn't do it, correct?
There was a majority Democrat.
Yes. And and Monique did have the same master's degree that she has now, correct?
Yes.
Huh. I just think, I don't want to be a hypocrite and I don't want to sound like a hypocrite and I don't like hypocrites. I just think that you guys took a bad rap in in the way that people are being used uh, to put further the Democratic Party of Lepore County is wrong. Um, I'm going to just leave it on that note that as public servants, and we have students back there, we are setting the example for them when they come and take these seats. And somebody's going to be here, take my spot to talk, we have to set the right example. Government does not usually work this way. But if we work together, we can get more done than divided. That's the pledge we take to the the flag every time we stand for the pledge. Mister Rosinski, thank you. Mister Haney, thank you, and Miss Graham Rosso, thank you as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mister McCormick, before you leave.
Yes.
Uh, I did talk with our our county engineer. They're going to have a bridge expert look at that bridge. In fact, uh, if there's any other bridges that we find that are, look like they're in bad repair, that's why we have a guy on staff for that. I'm gonna, they're gonna have, we're gonna look at that bridge and see what needs to be done and see what we have our funds to to do. That's on the part of the bridges being, uh, that's falling apart. As far as all the trash and everything on the outside, it's a weird deal that a bridge, no matter the the county is in charge of the bridges, even if it's in the city limits, the 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 city doesn't do anything with bridges. But that's the bridge, okay? All the stuff beside it. Um, street department of Michigan City should be doing a better job of keeping that cleaned up. And I I did address that today. I have talked to the sheriff department about possibly, uh, using inmates for community service. You know, they used to do a lot of that, but they they quit during COVID. But they're getting ready to, uh, to fire that crew back up again. Also, guys that have to, like, if you get arrested for something and you have to do weekends in in jail, possibly to get a crew from that. And also, I talked to the highway department about setting a day, one day where we 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 go over and we, you give us a list of where we've got messes around these bridges. And between the highway crew and possibly the inmates and the Michigan City Street Department, going to get them cleaned up one time. But after that, we're going to insist that Michigan City take care of their part of the bridge, which is not the bridge floor, not the bridge walls or anything, but any of that stuff outside. So once we get it cleaned up, we're going to insist that they keep that. So, uh, we're still putting this together to get a crew to do a one shot deal and get it all cleaned up. Yeah, I'll need your help on that.
Count me in on that. I will be there with garbage bags and, um, with my rake. You can also make a motion and make an ordinance, making sure that the city does their part.
Well, I'm working on that, you know that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mister McCormick. And I've got a copy of the bridge inspection reports I tracked down for you if you'd like, uh, if you'd like them. These are the most recent ones.
Public comment?
We'll get the, uh, legal stuff out of the way first, Mister Paycheck. My name's Meany, Pat Meany. I reside at forty seventy eight West Schultz Road. And Madam President, Mister Vice President, Mister Haney, and Mrs. Gonzalez, I'm glad to see you. Okay, for, uh, transparency, I want the board members to know that I had a private conversation with Mister Stamos the other day about signs that he had up in his, or let me put it this way, signs that he had displayed on some property that he owns. I won't go into my full conversation with Mister Stamos. And if I say anything that you take offense to, jump in there. My question is, after walking away from this, uh, conversation is, as a vendor in Lepore County who doesn't hire for services or vendors, and I presume the board does most of the hiring or the council or the maintenance department or whatever, what gives Mister Stamos the right to decide if an individual is making too much money? It's not up to him what that individual vendor makes. Individual vendor, and I'm going to use you for an example because you're a vendor. You tell this commission how much per hour you're going to charge. If this commission agrees with you and they agree with the way that you do it, Mister Stamos may fall under some statutory regulations that he has to look at. But to say that you make too much money or to prejudge what this commission is willing to pay to you is none of his business, not as the auditor. So for Mister Stamos to single out one, two, five vendors, it's not right. To have a, in my mind, a personal vendetta against one of the vendors that's been going on for years is not right. This has to be my third, maybe fourth trip to this podium. I'm going to say the same thing I said the first time I came up here. If you have solid factual evidence that collaborates what you have said, take it to the state police, take it to the county prosecutor, take it to somebody, although we don't have enough explore it, but take it to somebody who's going to validate your opinion and put a stop to what you're doing. But to hold a private vindictive, um, menacing campaign against one individual that you personally feel is making too much money is inappropriate.
That's not accurate.
It is accurate.
It's not accurate, sir.
And you just said it here in this courtroom. Do you know how much money he's making? He's making more money now than when he worked for the county. What difference does it make what he's making? What opinion is it of yours what he's making? When he worked for the county, he had the same deal Mister Paycheck had. Now he's making more money. You want to why? Because he's involved in litigation.
For you.
You're right. And I've come up to this board more times than not and thanked them. That he has continued to litigate for the citizens of this county. Now, it's not your place to tell people what they can and can't do. Your place is to pay them. Now, that's a hard concept for some people.
Did you made a walk up when you're done or were we having a conversation here?
I'm not having a conversation. I'm looking at you and I'm giving you my viewpoint.
I'll wait till you're done then, sir.
Whatever you want when I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you. It's not a hard concept. So whoever signs the contracts, whoever sets the wages, whoever sets the deal, pay them. That's it. This is a dog and pony show. And pay one million dollar payroll and this is how we act? Come on, guys, we can do better than this. And we just got through it all with a letter of understanding. That's what I'm going to call it. And here we are, fighting over it again. And now you're worried about whether we should rewrite it and put something else in there so she doesn't have a loophole. This can't continue. This has got to stop. So I understand, although you may have problems with particular vendors and you and you and you, unless you hire them and unless you sign the contract, get off their backs. Uh, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm a Michigan City man. Good evening, distinguished commissioners. I have a pub, could you public service announcement to make? First of all, I'd like to present five simple steps to keep your water pipes from freezing in the winter time. Now we're getting to the fall and winter month. That way you don't get a bunch of water where you don't want it. Number one, insulate your water pipe. Number two, set your thermostat.
Tommy, we can't hear you really well. Maybe you can uncover your speaker?
Okay.
Right there, we can hear you. Number one.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, number one.
Okay. No, number one, you want to insulate your water pipes. Number two, set your thermostat to room temperature. Number three, let your faucet trickle a drip. Number four, open your, the cabinet doors on your kitchen and bathroom sink when it gets really cold outside. And number five, remove the garden hoses on the spigots of your courthouse. Secondly, I have another public service announcement. The reconstruction of Pos Road began this morning. It's probably going to go on through the weekend, maybe the beginning of next week. All the motors, just avoid the that area for the, during that construction time. We'll have a nice, smooth and safe road, uh, maybe in a week or so, so we can take all our students and faculty members and visitors, like when we have the semi state for the I H A boys' basketball tournament in March. Uh, I want to again express my gratitude to you three commissioners for going in with the city with that commemoration of understanding for getting that done. That's really important for us. Secondly, I want to just announce that we're going to have our Michigan, two more weeks, Saturdays left for our Michigan City Farmers Market at Eighth and Washington in the Uptown Arts District, eight A M. to noon. Say, you know where a vendor at the farmer's market would take their sick equine to Michigan City Health Franciscan Hospital? Now with all that being said, I just want to wish you all a very pleasant good evening. May peace be with you and peace around the world. Uh, go woes, put another whooping on the slicers in the sectional game a week from Friday night. And and I'm Len O'Connor.
Thank you. Next, public comment?
You got to love that guy.
Thank you. I will try to make this as brief as possible and as non confrontational as possible. Commissioner Graham Rosso, we've not met before. My name is Steve Nightingale. Uh, my address is nine nine eight East, a thousand North. And I am the citizen who is most directly affected, uh, by Lepore County versus Versaw. Um, and I am here for a simple reason to say that I very much appreciate, number one, uh, Mister Friedman's efforts. Uh, Mister Friedman, I have not always agreed on everything, but overall, um, I support his work. And in particular, I am here to thank you for supporting him. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Tim Stables, county auditor, also a private citizen. I I would just like to say that when I was speaking, when I speak with with certain members of the public, such as Mister Meany, um, uh, in that conversation, I'm both the auditor of the county and I also happen to be a citizen. I view that as largely a private conversation. I gave opinions that I hold as auditor and or as citizen. And no one is going to take away my right, speaking as a citizen, to advocate for what I believe in or shame me for advocating that a certain attorney by the name of Shaw Freeman is destructive to Lepore County as the auditor.
You're slandering. I mean, that's slanderous.
Up here, um, as well. Um, I will advocate accordingly, but speaking specifically as auditor, I'm in a billing dispute with Mister Friedman or with the legitimacy of charges.
And that is in court. So we shouldn't be discussing that here.
The point I'm making is that that's in court. And I don't appreciate when any citizen acts like a bill should just be rubber stamped and that I have no statutory responsibility to examine those bills for political activity or lobbying or inappropriate actions. I will defend the citizens of Lepore County and I will not be minimized or dismissed in those actions. Mister Meany has a conflict of interest in that Mister Friedman is representing an interest that he has in court and he should disclose that because he has a conflict of interest and I just wanted to note that. And I was told in a prior conversation by Mister Meany that he may have been manipulated by Mister Friedman. Uh, but I guess he changed his mind at this point.
Oh, boy. Madam President, I I might as well bring this up now because as I've been the county attorney now since May ninth, I've had to witness these public, thank you, sir. I've had to witness these public comments. And I I do think, and I recommend, I'll make this recommendation to the commission, Madam President, that we start enforcing the policy that was set forth some time ago, limiting it to three minutes per person and not speaking about people personally. These these public comments aren't for people to come up just to hear themselves talk because they don't get to talk at home and go on and meander on forever. It's to make a comment about public business and move on. Otherwise, we won't get through these meetings and it's just going to be one personal attack or innuendo after another on both sides. And I I, it's just my recommendation. You're the board, not me. It's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Randy Beach, four one seven seven West Schultz Road. Um, careful with the path you're going down. We went down that path eight to nine years ago. It didn't work out well for it, for the county. Um, Lepore County is getting, is being represented by Shaw Friedman. And I thank, I thank the board for that. You guys have worked together. And Mister Friedman has been addressing the sand mining issue that has been going down, um, behind my my house in my neighborhood. To, uh, say that we have some personal favors with them is far from the truth. Uh, I can say I've butted heads with Shaw Freeman in here. You witnessed it. Many people witnessed me butting heads with him. Um, I do say that he is owning what he's supposed to be doing. And I greatly appreciate you guys keeping him on for that. I don't think you could, uh, have another attorney step in and with the knowledge, and you could probably attest for this yourself, that, uh, another secondary attorney who hasn't been involved with the case for nine years is not just going to step in at the at the pace that Mister Friedman has. Uh, I'm not trashing Mister Stables. Um, uh, I too feel that you, uh, do take this a little bit too personal. There's nothing personal with what I'm saying. I I think Mister Friedman is doing an outstanding job for Lepore County. He is working for Lepore County. I hopefully you guys will keep after what's happening behind my house because of all the hundreds of thousands, which has been testified in here before and not by me, uh, has been sent on this, spent on this. Now, today's court, um, it was brought out by the, uh, outfit that's behind me that they're now going to put in a subdivision behind me. Um, from the plant layout I seen and from where there is all the elevations, they're going to be digging out in all the C H C sand veins again. Put another coat of lipstick on the pig, it's still a pig. He's going to dig in the same places and I hope the commissioners will take it upon yourself to stay ahead of the process this time. Oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment?
George Callis, Tornado Drive, Lepore. I just want to clarify one thing. My question was, I'll use tonight as an example. We're all paying nine twenty nine payroll that was already paid two weeks ago, okay? And now I got a very simple answer. He has the, he has the statute that says he can do it with other things, Nipstone and so on. What I'm trying to say is, right now, tonight, you should be okaying the payroll ending ten thirteen. It was so simple, I don't even know why we are approving nine twenty nine because it says you have to. I don't know. It's already done and over with. Like my wife said, I cooked spaghetti tonight. Is that okay? No, it's not okay. I want steak tonight. So we're doing the same thing here. We're just wasting time. So what you should be approving is ten thirteen payroll tonight. If that's, if if that explains it better of what I was trying to explain two weeks ago or three weeks ago, whatever it was, okay? I just wanted to clarify that. It wasn't an attack against you, it wasn't an attack against you, it's just a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, for what it's worth, uh, the payroll ends on the thirteenth, Friday. Um, fourteen, fifteen, sixteenth, sixteenth would be, was Monday. Um, so this payroll has to be advertised by four P M. that day. So that would give just the eight hour business day for the auditor's office, not just the auditor's office, but for all the different departments to submit their payroll, get it all to the auditor's office for eight hundred people, roughly.
So when?
Not, and then them to compile all that within that eight hour window. Um, that's, that, that's asking a lot of.
No, I I just say, I don't understand. If payroll is due on ten thirteen.
That's the, that's the last day that. That's the last day that is paid for that pay period.
So the person ahead of that has Monday or so to get it all together to the auditor.
Technically, they have to be, theoretically, they have till Friday to turn it in.
Oh, they have an extra week to turn it in.
Yeah, basically.
Okay, see, five minute, nice and simple, but that still seems like we're wasting time. Okay, something that's already in the past, but that's the way government works, I guess. Never mind.
Public comment, do we have any other public comment? Public comment on Zoom. We are closing public comment. Department head comments. Do we have any department head comments? On Zoom, do we have any? We are closing department head comments.
I'm sorry, real quick, madam president, tomorrow, just so the public is re-aware of this, tomorrow we're having our, what we've dubbed Train McGeaden. It's a preparedness readiness exercise. It's going to be held in the, in our industrial complex right down here off of Seaver's Road. So if you see a bunch of activity there, it's been something that's been in the works since very beginning of this year. It's been about 10 years since LaPorte County's done something like this. We've been working for the past several months, many months actually, going back into January, February, working with our local district planning council and obviously all of our entities here locally to pull off this readiness drill. So it's not, it's something that's been in the works for at least eight months, if not nine months. So it's just a normal occurrence tomorrow. And I know I saw some stuff on social media, there's nothing to read into this. This is something we've talked about before, so it'll be fine. And that's it. So if you see a bunch of first responders moving around the industrial park tomorrow, that's what it is, so don't get concerned.
Thank you, closing department head comments request. Consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations for new vehicles.
Good evening, my name is Delora Garner. This is Holly Greshka from LaPorte County Community Corrections. We're asking permission to approach the county council to get five new vehicles, four out of our project income and one out of the misdemeanor fund.
Okay. And I think, Mr. Mazinski, did you have a question about that?
I knew we had this and I knew it was a while ago because I brought it to the attention of, I brought the ordinance to the commissioners and also to the council. I didn't realize it was 1998, but it was signed separately by the commissioner and also by the council that we would buy American-made products, which I received confirmation from the labor union saying, yeah, that's what we want to do here. I can forward this, I just finally got it this afternoon, I can forward this to your office. But the reason I brought it up is when your first thing you sent out was you're looking at Hyundai and Nissan, and they are not American products, so that I would not, I would not agree to that. But then I see now you've also gotten quotes from Chevrolet.
Yes.
I don't know if you're going to, if that's at all, but you know, we also have a Ford dealer in LaPorte and we also have a Chrysler dealer in LaPorte. But I would say, I would make a motion to give you permission to go to the council, but to remind you that we'd be looking at American products, Ford, Chevy or Chrysler.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yeah, that ordinance was like I said, number 98-11.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. I believe it says supplies that are not manufactured. So some of these automobiles might be foreign in nature, but they might be manufactured here in the United States. If I'm reading this correctly, I'm just saying this based on my reading of what I have today. This ordinance, 98-11, it says manufactured in the United States. So I don't know if that makes a difference for you, but that's how I read the statute.
Yeah, because when I originally brought this up, I was not in county government yet. I was still working in NIPSCO and I was still representing the United Steelworkers. I brought it as a union representative. Hyundai and Nissan are not, they do not have union employees. And their profits go back to a foreign country, not America. That's why we came up with the ordinance, it was signed unanimously by the council and unanimously by the commissioners. And the spirit of that ordinance was that we will buy products from companies, that American-made companies, American companies, by American union people. That's why we did it.
Commissioner Mazinski, I'm going to second your motion and also a little history on this. Couple meetings ago, the community corrections board brought to us a number of different bids from local dealerships right here, Ford, the Jeep dealership right down here as well. I think that was actually the one that we decided on was we wanted to go with the Dodge vehicles just because the prices were lined up right. That was, all three of us here voted in favor of that, sent it to the council. When it got to the council, they voted it down and basically asked them to go back to the drawing board. So that's why at our last Board of Community Corrections Board meeting, we approved this package because these were vehicles and given the open end for the council to figure out what they want to do. Just because there needed to be an alternative, we had already sent everything from the local folks here, from our local American-made folks here to, and American companies to the council, they shot it down. So that's why this is being brought back here today because there's nothing left other than pretty much this.
Well, I can say that if the council has a history of doing whatever heck they want to do, whether it's right or wrong, but if they choose to violate their own ordinance that was signed by prior councils, that'll be a whole different deal. But the council did sign the same ordinance that the commissioners signed unanimously. I know because I was there, brought it to them. So the council's going to have to make a choice, either going to have to live by the rules that are established or not. And will be dealt with accordingly.
Commissioner Haney mentioned, and obviously we have quotes from a variety of different vendors, both foreign and domestic. So we'll go to the council for the domestic and, you know, go from there. And I'm here not as chief probation officer, I'm here as advisory board chair, so.
Do you find out with the ordinance? Might help you guys, what are you going to do?
I would make that motion that we allow community corrections to go to the county council for funding for, and it'd be our recommendation that we would support buying American and support living up to the terms of ordinance number 98-11. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those are road call.
Commissioner Mazinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Madam President, can we go ahead and do the other? They also have for new business on 11B since they're already at the podium.
Absolutely. So consider permission to switch vendors for vending machines.
Yes, we would like to switch from canteen to CL vending.
Motion to approve.
Before the advisory board on Monday, the board, the advisory board fully supported it and voted to allow community corrections to approach the commissioners on this product.
Excuse me, madam president, sorry I mentioned this earlier. I understand what the request is, but I think historically, even though it might not be mandated, I think the best practice is to get more than one bid on this type of an issue for the vending machines.
If memory serves, the other vendor that we're using, the canteen that we're using right now, gave us prices that were higher than this one. I don't know if you guys went out for more than two, but I know that canteen, or CL is lower than the canteen. And there's been issues with services, well-being, stocking issues.
So we have the current, we have the current vendor who submitted a proposal and then we have a new one, correct?
Correct.
So what's the pleasure of the commission?
I would move to approve the CL contract.
Second.
Road call.
Commissioner Mazinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, under old business, we have consider awarding bid for food services in the jail presented by our sheriff, Ron Heek.
Good evening, commissioners, Ron Heek, sheriff. If you recall, last month, we came to the board and we had received three proposals for a food service within the county jail. We've reviewed those proposals and it is our recommendation that we move with TIGS, food services for the food service within the jail. So we ask for you guys' support on that tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second, I assume you've gone through the contract for that.
Not gone through the contract. We have not received a contract, this was just for the approval of the bid.
Second.
We'll be bringing a contract to you before the first of the year.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to.
TIGS, yep.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, road call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mazinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under new business, consider contract with USI Consulting Services to monitor deck cracks on Bridge 186.
Commissioner, well, Jay's making it to the podium. I've spent a considerable amount of time talking with Jay and with Mitch and with USI. This is a very unfortunate situation we have here. It's been collectively, from everyone I've talked to, suggested that we go ahead and do the contract with USI through our on-call contract. And, but as far as any other conversation about it, I would caution that because, like I said, I've explored this in depth and I can't see how this is not going to end up in litigation. But in the meantime, it's been the recommendation from, and from our own people, that we have USI inspect the bridge and monitor it because it's got some serious problems.
Is that a motion?
I would make the motion, yes, so we go ahead and sign the contract with USI.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Road call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Mazinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thanks for your work on that, Jay. That's putting us in a bad spot, I understand, but.
It's a big issue, we'll definitely stay on top of it, make sure it gets taken care of. And I was in conversation with Mr. McCormick over there earlier on that Bridge 503, which is the one on E Street, Michigan City, and there's some other ones. And I'm going to send the USI consultant back out. This is not going to cost us anything, it's their job. We've got them under a four-year contract to do this, to relook at some of these bridges just to verify that they're in good shape. The bridge inspection report from that bridge from last year says it's in good condition. It's got a high rating. It is on our priority schedule. We've got nine bridges right now that are in the works, under construction or in the bid process. And I've got four more that we're looking at doing internally in-house. That'll save us some money and they're not expansive engineering involved. So I've taken that upon myself on some other bridges, we can do that and hopefully save some money on that. We'll get it in our budget, of course. But we're looking at that and that is a concern of everybody trying to do a, you know, do a good job, make everything, everything safe for the county.
Now, we do have a bridge just east of there, on Trail Creek, Trail.
12, I believe.
Liberty Trail.
Liberty Trail Creek, yes.
And so that one currently has been inspected. We have allocated monies to go towards that bridge, so there is going to be work being done on that bridge.
Yes, we're putting new approaches on that bridge, concrete approaches on that bridge. And then a trail project, they're putting a sidewalk, a side trail on the bridge also when they're raising the guardrail up on it.
Right.
Yep, yeah, the approaches were replaced on that. And we're getting, that's another, that's part of a grant. That's the thing too, is we're trying to get as much money as we can from the grants to do these bridges because they're so expensive.
Now, do you know when that's on the schedule or?
It's going to be a couple of years down the road.
Okay, but it is in the works.
It is in the works, yes. Yeah, actually, I've seen the plans for the approaches already, the preliminary plans for those, so I know it's in the works, I guess in probably two years before the approaches are done there.
Okay, well, thank you.
I would predict, Jay, that after we get the report back from USI on Bridge 186, that we sit down with legal counsel and have a pile of how we're going to proceed.
Yes, you know, I think it's very important to maybe get the legal counsel involved. And Mitch and I have highly recommended not making the final payment to that contractor until this is resolved.
Right.
And we don't know who's at fault at this point. It is, it's going to be a costly accounting regardless.
But legal counsel is already involved, correct?
Yes, I want to make sure that they get within that.
I talked with Scott about it and informed him what was going on. And it's kind of complicated, but I explained it the best I could. Just so, a little heads up to know that we've got a serious problem there. And there's a couple of different entities here that are going to be responsible for making this right.
It's going to be expensive fix.
Once we get, yeah, it's going to get messy. Once we get the report back from USI, we'll know a whole lot more.
I just wanted to let the public know too, though, and the commissioners, that I mean, that has looked at the bridge, they've had experts out there to look at the bridge. And the bridge is safe for vehicle transport on it right now, the load limit of 80,000 pounds plus. So it is safe to travel on. It is the deck that is cracking, however, that could lead to problems in the future. We want that thing to last 50 years. That's why we're going through all this effort right now. But the bridge is safe to travel on, so that's important to know.
Thank you.
Yeah, my concern is heavy agricultural equipment going across it and school bus, so.
Yeah, the beams are safe, it's just the concrete that's not in good condition, so we just got.
A little shaky.
Well, thank you very much, though.
Thank you, Jay. Good job.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.